Today's the 19th of March. Take a minute to read the minutes. I don't know if we have enough people, right? I don't think so. Cash, Jess, Jenny, Yoli, Art, Gavin.
That's why you only got two people that we need.
Some of them probably show up.
Well, hopefully one of those.
Go on later.
Who's that out there?
Ken.
Oh.
You can't.
You guys. All right, then we'll set aside the minutes for the time being. And we need to set a date for the public hearing.
I gave you the calendar.
For this referendum vote, which you all have a copy of. It's two of the selectmen's and then our proposed zoning change. Now, because of the way the cutoff date and when absentee ballots are due, the best date for us would be October 30th.
April.
April 30th. It's a Thursday night. Nobody else is having meetings, not us and not the selectmen. And it's within the timeframe, but it's not after absentee ballots.
Make ten as a cutoff date. That's when the absentee ballots are due.
Oh, she told me it was before that. Anyway.
That's 30 days.
I'm proposing April 30th for the public hearing. And we'll go over all. Now, because all zoning changes have to be proposed for a public hearing, it has to be held by the planning board. Even if we didn't bring it forward, if it's a zoning change, we still have to run the public hearing. So because even though two of these are proposed by the selectmen, it's still going to be our public hearing. And we'll run it just like any other public hearing. So.
Why couldn't we have it the 16th?
Because if it's too far, it has to be within 45 days.
Oh, it has to be within 45?
No, 30 days. See, I put the criteria's on the back.
Well, what's the 45 day thing?
Um, I don't know.
Well, that's what I had.
Hi, how are you?
I know that that's absentee ballots. It has to be within... Screw it. I'm sorry.
The absentee ballots will be available... The 30 days is on a Sunday, so the absentee ballots will be available on the 8th.
All right. Now, you got all this from Jennifer?
Yes, she and I love this, yeah.
Well, why aren't we talking about the 30th, though? Jennifer and I were talking about the 30th.
I think because that was the... Now, that's still legal. You have to have at least 30 days ahead of time. So that's more than 30 days. And I think it was because it was a Thursday that nobody else was meeting.
Yeah, could be.
So it still gives me time to do the notices that have to be done because you have to... It has to be in the paper seven days and 14 days.
Right, right.
And it has to be posted 14 days here at the town law.
And like, all right, if we didn't do it then, we could do it the 7th of May. But then we're getting closer to the end. And if we decide we want to have another informational public hearing, we can have as many of those as we want. This is the one official, cover-all-the-bases public hearing. After that or before that, we can have as many informational public hearings as we want. But the official one, I'm still shooting for the 30th.
Chip, I get a question.
Yes, sir.
Have the selectmen... Is it our choice as to when we schedule the selectmen's item? Or can that be done simultaneously?
No, it's all... It's done all at the same time.
Okay.
So everything gets... It's one official public hearing with all three questions. And then we go from there. And like I said, we can have as many more afterwards if we want.
Yeah.
Does anyone have a problem with April 30th?
I kind of like the idea of having a little bit sooner that way. Like if there was a big question that came up, we've had to research or something else, it could be a little earlier than that.
Maybe we should reschedule the informational session like one of the nights for our meeting and have it somehow advertised so that people know.
We could do that on the 16th if you want.
On the 2nd as well. I'll make it.
Hold on, wait a minute. That's vacation week, though. And I'm not going to be here. The second might bill over too soon.
Isn't vacation week the 20th?
For informational session, we could do that. We don't need the same notice, right?
Oh, you might be right.
It might be the week of the 20th.
Two, three.
I think she's right.
Yeah, 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 you're right, right, right. Yeah. I'm still not going to be here, but it's not vacation week.
We're getting used to that.
Yeah, right.
What can I say?
Oh, you made it the 30th?
Yes, I'll be back for the 30th.
All right, no motion made in the public hearing on the 30th. Oh, you already made a motion, I second that.
No, I was just suggesting it. I just needed a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right.
Can we just... Can I just recap, please, Bonnie? What is the decision on the 10th?
Public hearing, April 30th.
The official one?
The official one.
Okay. Have we set any dates for any others?
No, because we haven't set this date yet. So any other questions? Any comments, questions with this date?
Yeah, why would you object to having two official public hearings where we could have the selectmen with us for more public?
Oh, I'm sure they'll be there anyway.
Right, but we could... Oh, for the informational session, do you think they'd sit in on the meeting as well?
We're just calling it that. It'll still be a public hearing. And this is a public hearing, too. It's an informational public hearing. But, yeah, they'll be anything we want them to be. Especially if we're going to be going over their proposed ordinances.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Well, are we going to schedule after this discussion for the 30th? Any other means?
We certainly can.
Okay.
Well, let's get through this one. Any other questions with this, April 30th? All right, allists in favor, aye?
Aye.
Allists opposed, nay? All right, April 30th. Shoot. Now, take a minute to read the minutes as long as time got here. Let's get that out, lawyer.
Can I make a motion with a second?
Is there a second? All right, any chance of corrections? All right, allists in favor, aye? Allists opposed, nay? Terrific. What's the date today? 19th. Okay. So, up for grabs, what else have we got?
Do we want to schedule additional hearings?
Yeah.
Well, let me share. Did you talk to the board members of our meeting on this?
No.
Do you want...
No, go ahead.
Okay. We met with a gentleman by the name of Dennis.
Tom Sis.
From O'Donnell's office. And Ted was present. And Ted was there. And myself and Chip came in a little bit later. He was there for the substantive part. What we did, with Chip's good help preceding the meeting, he asked Jennifer for a record of the abatements from... What the hell was it, 2008? Going all the way back?
Yeah.
Yeah. We were hoping to get a sense of like before and after. And what they had time to give us was basically after the enactment of the zoning. And out of 15 requests that had been granted, there were zero that implicated anything to do with the wetlands. There were five that were questionable when we initially spoke with Jen. And those five that we went into in some brief detail were basically... Two of them were effective frontage in the shoreline zone, changed to something that was stated on the card. A third one was adjusting the frontage. Then there was a lot size adjustment. And then one was held up because the building was not complete when the assessor had visited the site. So their claim, Ted's claim made in the workshop, to my mind, is unfounded.
The one where there's so many... We owe so much money that it would close down our entire budget?
Well, there were abatements granted, but none of them had anything to do with the reason that we...
So what prompted this again? Did anyone in mind what prompted this whole thing, then?
There's a lot of pieces of property that are affected by the last change in zoning. And...
When you say affected, what do you mean?
Yeah, that's good.
Well, they were buildable at one time.
Chip, can you step back? Where are you... Why are you taking on this case?
Taking what case? I'm just... She asked a question. I was just trying to answer it.
Well, but you had no...
Now, wait a minute. Now, you understand that there's not many people here. Everybody has a different voice. We all don't...
Yeah, I understand that. But you supported the planning board proposal, did you not?
Which... Did you mean this?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay. Do you think there's any merit to, given what we cleaned on Wednesday, or sensibility in terms of resource planning to the selectmen's proposal?
There might be if they have to do a revaluation of land that at one time was buildable and now might not be. If they have to revalue a lot of lots in town and lower valuation on these lots, they have to raise valuation on other lots to match the town's total valuation.
And how would you... How would you give merit to that premise? Didn't we just research that question to the best of our ability and come up with the notion that based upon three years of history, most proximate to the inception of the change, there was no effect?
Because you may not have people... A lot of people aware of it. If these properties aren't being built on right now, if they're just, you know... People just own them and they haven't decided to build on them or use them yet. Or they don't realize that maybe there are some things they can't do now that they thought they could. Somewhere down the road, they may come to the town and say, you know, "Hey, I thought I could use this piece of land for a garage, and it turns out I can't." So... And if there's enough properties... If there's one or two properties, it may not be that big a deal. If there's enough properties affected and people start coming to the town seeking abatements, then... If you have a lot of people looking for abatements and if it's legitimate, then you have to change the way you're valuing some pieces of land because something's wrong.
Either the process whereby the assessor takes into... The other gentleman's made at the time of the inquiry, either they hold some faith in the legal integrity of the zoning or else they maybe say, "Well, this guy has got some kind of a case and rather than risk the town liability, we're not going to make this a test case. We're just going to resolve this and give the guy an abate."
Well, they usually go on a case-by-case basis.
I could see that would be a problem if that's time to recover. I think, given that we've had three years of time and there were no challenges, zero, to this inception of zoning, I think we ought to trust the good sense of the townspeople when they adopted this and just...
Fine, I've got no problem with what you're saying. I hope you're not saying that because these proposals were from a different group, they shouldn't be included in the referendum. They're here, they're going to be voted on, we're going to have a public hearing. There's no reason discussing it now and finding out who lines up on what side.
I do wish that it was done by a petition to give it a little more merit because that's still a no.
Anyway.
Whereas the case that Ted was claiming existed, there's no evidence to show that they...
Well, when you have a buffer on your buffer wetland, are you taxed full price for it or do you get a break? That is... I mean, that is what people want to know.
And that's not our purview, really. We did the homework that was necessary to answer some of the assessing questions surrounding the zoning when it was prior to its adoption. You saw that.
As far as I know, after this last zoning thing, I don't think they did a big revaluation of the town. So if people become aware that because of the zoning changes and the buffers and whatnot, pieces of their land are not usable anymore, they may start coming to the town. But to seek an abatement, you have, I think it's, oh, 180 days? Do you know Virginia?
No, I don't.
There's X amount of days after the tax has been... The town tax rate or whatever has been posted, August 15th or something, I don't know. You've got X amount of days after that to seek an abatement. If you seek an abatement after the time limit's up, you have no standing anymore. You have to wait for the next year for a new tax being set and then secure abatement. If people start coming forward saying, "Hey, I just found out I can't use my land, blah, blah, blah," the town may have to do something about it. And if there's more than just a couple of lots, they may want to be proactive and revalue these properties in question. And if they did that, it would change around the valuation of the properties in town. They'd have to... If they're losing money here, they have to gain money somewhere else. So everybody gets affected. Some people can't use this piece of land, but he's paying less in taxes. Somebody else is going to have to pay more in taxes to make up what they've lost here.
Do you...
And I have no idea if anyone's going to be worried about this down the road. I have no idea if the town is going to be proactive and revalue a bunch of these properties or not. Or if they're going to wait for people to come in on a one-by-one basis. These are all things we could find out better at the public hearing from a selectman because they're going to try and figure...
Will they finally come?
Pardon me?
They will come?
Well, yeah, sure, because they've got two things on here. And they're going to try and figure out between now and then what the change in valuations would be if either one of... If any of these passed. So we'll have... We'll get some hard numbers. And we'll... And you've seen the map that Kenny drew. He boxed in all the ones... All the properties that are affected now. So, you know, we'll just... All these things will be answered at the public hearing.
Do you think the planning board measure has gone in the direction of achieving a compromise when those issues are brought up? My own sense is that we've struck a good middle path there and allowed significant leeway for the applicant to do whatever they would be able to do without infringing upon the, you know, value of the wetland. I think it would be hard... It would be hard-pressed to validate the necessity of an abatement unless...
Fine, we'll just have to see what happens.
The other issue is that, you know, let the buyer beware. The town ought not to be held out to dry every time somebody has to complain about their lot. And, you know, zoning restricts me here, restricts me there. The zoning is for the public good. It may cut one way or another as to how it affects us as individuals. But the town adopts a zoning one, this would be an idea in mind that it does, you know... It may be injurious to somebody, but it's beneficial on the whole for the public good. And that's why we have zoning. It's part of the plan. So we can't assure every landowner that they can do willy-hilly whatever they want to do with their property. That's not... That never was nor hopefully shall be out of town planning.
I agree. Anything else, anybody? Where did what appears to be the first question come from? The first thing here?
Yeah. And I don't remember. Maybe it was something that was discussed...
The selectmen have two.
Right. But they never referred to the one of them.
I don't know. I... They've always... There's always been two proposals.
There's always been two. The one that we did and the one that they...
No, no, they've had two. We've had one. There's always been three.
There's two parts to the sort.
Right, yeah.
The 4.224 and the 4.226. Where the planning board and the selectmen...
We didn't mention that last week.
It's the 4.226.
Well, also, the 4.22 whatever, the first one encompasses all wetlands.
That's wetland.
All wetlands, even the stuff that's contiguous to the great ponds. Whereas we left the large ones that the state has declared, we let them untouched. And only did all the little ones.
Well, we only looked at stuff outside of the shoreline zone, too.
Right, that's what I was...
I think that was...
Just translate.
One of the big differences.
Yes.
They looked at all the RP and we're just looking outside of shoreline.
Yeah, and then they decided just to get rid of the other RP.
Well, they proposed to get rid of it. Anything else?
Just curious if anybody had time to digest that NRCM report that I shared with you guys at our last meeting.
You sure?
I didn't mean to say... I wasn't here last... Last meeting, so...
It might be in the phone. Do you only have... Did you have a chance to glance at it?
You know, it's been a while.
The reason I wanted to share that with you was because I think it kind of frames the issue that's facing us with these zoning proposals in the sense that it kind of ups the ante of our work. Because if you have the time to digest that document, you'll see that the backing of the DEP at the state level has been greatly diminished in terms of their ability to be an effective public advocate and work with municipalities for lake protection programs. The budgets for many of the programs that they had in place that we used to avail ourselves of have been largely removed or curtailed to the point of ineffectiveness.
Ineffective or reduced effectiveness?
Well, unless you... I won't make the judgment. I just hope that you all have a chance to read it because I think it kind of ups the ante on our role as solicitors to protect our resources because we don't have the help that we previously had from the state agency that was kind of critical in the process.
All right, anything else?
Yeah, just how could we schedule like an informative session for... Could it be the 16th?
I'll send you.
Is something we can put on the website just to let people know?
Yep. Could you do that? Could you get some notices out? Informational meeting on proposed zoning changes to the zoning ordinance for the 16th of April.
So you have one on the 16th and the official one is the 13th?
Right, yeah, yeah. In fact, if you could give me just like four copies. I got this. Exactly. Yeah, just informational meeting on proposed zoning changes.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, here. The 16th of April. All right. Terrific. Anything else?
Just to piggyback a little bit on what Tom was saying about the zoning. A few weeks ago, Gavin, we were talking about the schoolhouse and Tom Gore's proposal exception. And Gavin asked me what I thought. And at that point, I didn't really know what I thought. But setbacks are a lot the same as what Tom's talking about. Setbacks are how we protect resources, public safety, how we keep people from intruding any more than needs to be on each other. The zoning is somewhat the same line of thinking.
All right.
If anybody wanted to find more information out about that report, they could go online to nrcn.org and look for Lake Report, the entire Troubled Waters.
Okay.
Has this been put on the planning board website?
No. Well, I just got it today.
Did you put our one proposal on there?
No. I didn't. I didn't because I wasn't sure if we should put one and not all three. But I got it today.
So we can put all three on there?
Sure. Well, the selectmen...
I was going to say eight.
They probably have... There's probably a copy of the referendum on the website.
I'm not sure that there is yet because I think it was just signed.
Oh.
But the reason... Our page is, what, three or four deep? If they put it on the main page, when you click in, there it is, I think would be more beneficial. But I'm not sure what they plan to do.
Oh, you mean the town website is supposed to be planning board website?
Right.
Yeah.
We're just a tab on the website, so...
Well, either way, I mean, just if we could get it out there so people have it, you know, in their head as long before the hearing as possible.
Well, if we don't have it there, I'm sure that the... You can find out from Jennifer.
If they don't, one of us will.
And if it's on the town's one, it'll come up faster.
Exactly.
Then hunt through ours and throw them crap while avoiding it.
Right. I mean, they would have to go up and pick the tab and then pick the...
Right, right.
It's three clicks to enter us where if it's on the main page or something.
And then the hearing will be right on the main page.
And now that we have...
It's on the table.
A hearing date.
Yeah, so this could be right with the hearing posted on the...
It will.
Okay.
She'll do that as soon as they know that we've officially picked a date. These questions are going to referendum, all three of them? Apparently, yeah. And the referendum is going to be on the voting day, whatever it is. On the 9th.
On the 9th.
So the town meeting...
I'm going to have to read them.
Pardon me? Well, that's why we hope that there'll be enough people at the public hearing that if they have questions, they can, you know...
It's because absentee ballots will be available 30 days.
But they want referendum because they want more people invited. And zoning changes used to be have to be a town... Well, apparently it is town meeting. We always thought it meant the sit-down town meeting at, you know, on the Saturday. But town meeting starts on the 9th when they gamble it open and pick a moderator and they start voting. That's when town meeting starts. And the lawyers told them that that's all you need. That's when town meeting starts, and the lawyers told them that that's all you need to evoke changes to zoning ordinances. So in the past, we thought it had to be, you know, the physical sit-down, stand-up, blah, blah. And it just, is when town meeting is open, that's when it starts, so they can legally do this with referendum votes. And then you get, you get more people to vote. Whether they know what they're voting on, that's another question, but that's not my problem. We're going to try and alleviate that the 30th. Well, we'll do what we can do, you know?
You going to reserve upstairs?
For the 30th? Yeah, 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 yeah. Sure, we don't want all us in the selectmen in this little room, do we?
So what's, the public hearing is going to be on all three questions?
Yes, yes, because the planning board has to hold the official public hearing for any zoning changes, regardless of who proposes them, unless it comes by petition later on, you know, after the dates that we could do anything, you know? But, good night, everybody. Good night, Cattle Land.